Would you please join me for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and to be just as.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. You're either sitting in person or tuning in virtually to the November ninth meeting of the County Kansas River Planning Board. Thank you for joining us. Well, I see a lot of familiar faces, so I'm going to forego the introductions. I think if is there someone that doesn't know someone here? Okay, we're we're all among friends, right? Okay. So with that being taken care of, I just want to point out, we have two exits. My left and right should an emergency occur and you have to leave the room. Please use one of those exits. First thing I want to do is officially is do privilege of the floor, which is a within our agenda where we ask anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding an issue that's not on the agenda. Now would be the time to come to the podium and ask your question or make your statement. Okay, here we go. As far as any attestments required from C D for public hearings, we have no public hearings. So there were no, no publications or legal notices in the daily messenger for this meeting, so that was one less thing we had, save some money. All right, first item on the agenda is Mark's Engineering, Karen Brendan Marks, Representative Angelo. I've thought you said your name in a while. Leachardello. I got in a routine there where you're here every week, every month. Angelo is the owner of property at thirty-five thirty-five State Route three sixty-four. He has come to C D for an extension request of his preliminary overall approval for his subdivision for affectionately the Sunset Ridge subdivision. His current applicant or his current approval expires next month on the eleventh. And Angelo, Angelo and Sal has submitted a request for an extension. And we have before us tonight a ninety day extension resolution and if you can just bring us up the date where you stand, I know it's been a couple of six months.
Yes, it's been a while. Well, first of all, it's good to see you all. So when the conditionary preliminary, conditional preliminary approval was granted back in June, there was a lot of conditions, I think, over twenty. We've made a good progress, still need, you know, working to resolve all those, I think we have two or three outstanding items. We had initially talked about maybe asking to modify it, but I spoke with Chris Nadler and he kind of reassured me that some of those conditions weren't as stringent as we initially thought. I'm really just worried about getting caught up waiting for responses from other state agencies, term generals, etc. But we are very close. Working with Woods Ovia Goman on doing the homeowners association. They're going to be taking care of filing that. Like, we're supposed to have something at the beginning of this week to give to you guys regarding that, but it's been in delay. So we're hoping to get that over to Mr. Naylor to review as early as next week. But we are very close, I think. Probably about ninety percent of the way there, so I think we may be able to get everything before the December eleventh. But we just wanted to, you know, put the extension in now to be proactive. You know, as we push in towards the holiday season, you know, people start taking a little bit longer to respond. So we feel like the ninety days will be enough to.
So this is for the preliminary overall. And I guess the procedure would be, once the conditions are met and they've been confirmed by staff and our engineering firm, the plans get signed. Then I guess you would sue a final approval of one of the sections.
Section one, two.
Section, you're thinking about, okay. The one holding your particular section.
Yeah, that's what we're pointing out right now.
So then that would be the next thing this board would say would be file plan. So, board, we have in front of us a request for an extension of ninety days to March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Sal said he feels it can be accomplished in a much shorter period of time in terms of meeting the condition, so if someone make a motion regarding granting extension.
I will move that we grant the extension for C P N twenty-two oh and two extending the new expiration date to March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
If I may, I apologize, my end date, the expiration is off from that for you tonight. So it's really December eleventh twenty-two is when the project expires. That would mean the expiration date of the ninety day extension would be March eleventh.
March eleventh versus the sixteenth.
Sorry about that.
With with the previously approved conditions.
Okay, have motion done second?
A second.
Motion second for the discussion.
Why do we have the time limitations?
I didn't stay long.
The hundred and eighty day time period is typically what Canada has used in the past. And that gets us halfway through the year and then we offer the ability to do the ninety day extension, which isn't from in town law. That that ability is provided, that gets you to the one year standpoint. Some communities offer up longer than that, but we go to that one year timeframe. And anything that can't make it automatically comes back in a new application in some instances, we already saw that with the metro's project.
But what is, what is the intended purpose of a six month timeline?
The hundred and eighty days because I, I don't know specifically why that they, other than to get you happy for a year. So that, right, and then after six months of nothing's been moving forward or progressing with the conditions, then that gives us for the bill or the ability to extend it another ninety days. Again, with written requests, reasons supporting why that is, and then another ninety day on top of that if the need arises. As to why the hundred and eighty days, I think it was just to accommodate the backend.
I thought it was stable, but you're just saying it's our local.
Some communities have extended beyond that. You know.
The initial.
Or they might not put. Right, some communities won't even put a timeframe as to when the plan expires.
That's what I was asking, is why we care?
I think it's just because we have that one year time window where something happens and the plans don't ever get assigned. Do you really want to go another year or two years before you see it, and then when you see it? What codes, what building codes, what fire codes, what town codes have changed over that three year period? Is it still the same project that you?
No, no, I understand the one year, I was just wondering if there is a reason that we have the six months. Does it, is that to help? To say, hey, you're halfway through?
I think it's just to bring it back to you guys with information as to why it's being delayed.
Should we be concerned, this isn't the first timeline that's been missed on this project? Should we be concerned about that?
I don't know what other deadline you're referring to.
I was turned down at the town board level for the application timing that happened at that time.
It was just for the timing for our petition to rezone the property. As you know, we faced a large organized effort against the project, which caused some delay. But that was a completely different project. I don't think I'm speaking out of turn to say that we pretty much hit all our deadlines with this, with this project. And we've also been making a lot of, you know, progress too, it's not like we're, we hit two out of twenty-three, whatever, you know, we we're like ninety percent of the way there. There's been a lot of coordination with, you know, Town of Hopewell and other, you know, agencies too that have just kind of been bogged down and taken a while.
Yeah, and sale just speaking, this is Brendan Marks here, right? You know, we submitted to the Department of Health and the county sewer department, which if anyone's dealt with the Department of Health before, it usually takes them about six months to even get back to you on it. We have not even heard from the health department on this yet. But I imagine we're floating to the top of their pile and I'll hear from them shortly.
I, I just to add a little bit of background too, I know that as part of this project, the county sewer in joint with other communities, Canada, Gorum, Hopewell, we're doing a study. So we're studying for capacity reasons, which could have changed the size of the sewer that's being extended as part of this project. They didn't want to run into a problem later on as part of that process that would not allow future connections at the time arise during review purposes, so they thought they would do a study now. I know that study took a little bit longer than anticipated. I think it ended probably August, September, I can't speak for the county, but I know that's about the time period that we had heard it had finished. So I know that that was one element that played a role in in some of the delay, whether it was all of the reasons, I can't speak to that, but I know that was one.
Yeah, and another thing we've been working on is we've been dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, so that's that is also, you know, dealing with the, the federal government is, is a slow process also.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion in second to grant the extension in favor. Okay. Thanks, Al.
Thanks a lot, guys.
See you shortly.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Moving on the agenda, we're looking at Mahar Engineering, Karen Anthony Tera, project engineer from an address in Rochester, Representative Brian Angie Jocelyn owning property, live in Columbus, Ohio, but they own property on a thirty-six eleven County Route sixteen, requesting a simple state site plan approval for a tear down rebuild of a single family home with a graded extension of existing driveway and approximately square forty to the outskirts, twenty-six square feet. This is a continuation from back.
September twenty.
Yeah. Yeah, it was right there.
So.
No, I think it was fourth May.
Anthony, if you'd like to go to the podium?
Yeah, would be first, third.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think we, we sent you back to the drawing boards primarily regarding issues that we had, the E C D had, County Plan Board had, all related to landscaping and showing guidelines, issues and making sure that we felt that the project, that the shoreline guidelines. And you want to tell us what you've done to try to make your issues?
Yes, I actually have a couple sets of materials like these, if you don't mind, hand over to me.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone.
Yep. Good to introduce yourself and the record.
Yes, my name is Tony Tenfera, I'm the project engineer with Mahar Engineering for Jocelyn Site Plan Project, County Road sixteen, Seating approval tonight. Previously, we presented the project at the September twenty-seventh, County Board meeting. Approval for a rear lake setback of the proposed homes received during the September twentieth, Senate Board meeting. Current comments that were received for the project. Comments were received from Canada Lake County's district, Don Hagen, so satisfied. Comments were also received from Ontario County Department of Public Works, Paul, we're all satisfied. Comments from Lance, we responded to October fourteenth. Lance, would you be able to elaborate as to?
All of our comments have been addressed as well.
Yes, I'd like to take some time to discuss the project as related to the shoreline development guidelines. Given the last meeting, to me, the main concern. Kim, I had shared a video of some drone footage taken on the shoreline for our project. Are you able to bring that up? If not, I did bring a laptop that I could use to share.
I, I think it kind of might be a chore to bring the video, but I think we all saw the still shots. Well, I was.
The video is on the M drive.
On the M drive?
Yeah. You have it on our network.
If you want to, if you can show it without too much.
It's really just big information.
We did see the still shots where you either pulling it or depending on which order you were watching. As far as the drones from the lake, so we saw that, how the, is the video just?
Video is just a cleaner look focusing on neighboring properties head on, okay, coming across the base of.
I don't want to spend a lot of time, if we can pull it up, fine, if not, I think we have enough information as to what the house looks like.
There we go. Yes, this is started from the South Butler Road, working north, that White House, there with the dock, that's part of the site.
How does the height of the roof line match with the neighboring homes?
Height of the roof line match with the neighboring homes?
Yeah, in comparison, so is it higher, is it, or using the telephone line, something along those lines?
It's lower and what's ultimately proposed is maxing out the twenty-five foot max building length for R L B zoning district based off of Canada's headlines, the only one to the zoning board, the rear lake setback. So, yeah, I think that's pretty much all we wanted to show with the video. In terms of how the proposed home is in relation to the overhead lines. This detail, I did on our drawings, you can see red line there showing an offset from the average grade taking on the perimeter. Ultimately, we're bringing up surrounding wall on the roofs, where there'd be access just before that twenty-five foot. On the roadside, you can see how the overhead wires are in relation to the home as well.
Oh, I actually misread that when I looked at it in the electronic time, I didn't realize that that was power line.
So the, the back, the wall, the top of the wall is twenty-five feet, right? It's from the mean average.
Mean average, taking around the perimeter of the structure. So with respect to the video that was shown, as you can see, the property surrounding our lot, those neighboring properties and our lot itself is a great lack of vegetative span. From the lakeside building facades, most likely as a result of the hardship of limited yard space. Looking two houses south, north of our property, there's really now a whole lot of variation in terms of that's the beach property. And therefore, really the separation distance between that side of the structure and the seawalls. So at that point, that limited yard space restricts the kind of vegetation that can be established on site without damaging the brick walls or house foundations. And talking with Brian, who is not joining on Zoom tonight, his own plane trip out of state. Wanted to talk a little bit about the history of the lot. Specifically, this home has been maintained by the same family for generations now. The property holds a lot of sentimental values, a childhood home for our client. Brian, whose grandparents maintain the property. Ultimately, Brian wants to keep the house as is, much like what his grandparents had. Hence why the color, color of the home was being proposed, is essentially matching the white tones that currently exist. There was a rendering that I had shared as well, I believe everybody saw. It's really only the variation of the overhang of the structure where some clapboard siding with a darker tone, say beige, is currently proposed. Ultimately, the main color of all the sodas is proposed and stuck though as a off light. But again, you're seeing the layer tones that currently exist. Again, the site is very important to our client. This, you know, this even reflects in the house plans as the interior layout is not reflected in the street at home. With respect to yard space, Brian names a term with a built yard space he has into sort of oasis, as he described it. Previously, his grandmother lined the existing concrete break wall with potted plants, which is exactly what Brian intends to do. He'd like to have window gardens placed at the windows on the inside of the house to better strengthen property in the lake. Ultimately, this isn't represented in the renderings or shown. So I have a printout that I provided to be shown, generic representation of what those two hundred's windows would look like. Addition to potted plants along the brick wall. Trying to stress that it likes fishing, additional potted plants around even in front of the roof. And also on the stairs coming down accessing the water fish. We can see our landscaping, sort of generic representation of shrubs and board trees. Actually, we'd like to propose the placement of only the shrubs adjacent to the stairs, just north and south of those stairs. Originally on site, a large bill of trees existed that had been removed due to the root damage that had taken place over time to the existing break wall. Our plans, we show that break wall as a four foot, four to five foot width. In reality, it's not that sturdy, that cap was poured in the eighties. Majority of the seawall is so much thinner shell underneath, which having failed during that time period in the eighties is the reason why that concrete cap was poured. Perhaps in the future, that break wall will be improved, say with a cheap island wall median in front of it. Much sturdier approach that would allow the removal of that concrete cap, increasing green space and the potential for more vegetation on the lot. That being said, if dwarf trees were replaced on site now, the removal five years down the road would be likely. This would pose a logistical challenge in terms of how the trees would be removed from the site at that time. As well, this would be screaming. As long as this would be for a dwarf tree, if there are shrubs behind it, specifically though showing more from the south to the stairs and rendering. And those trees should really just be provided for the sake of screaming and not to establish a long term vegetative. The cycle that in five years from you planted, just for the sake of screaming lower elevation of the home. Where again, you self neighboring properties, what you have, you have none whatsoever. Did reach out to several local botanists and nurseries, some examples include Ted Holmes Landscaping, Garden Center, May Flowers and Bristol's, with respect to what the recommendations would be for the limited space adjacent to the lake. And I provided copies of boards regarding some of the recommended plantings that would be used adjacent to the stairs. I'd like to point out in our updated shoreline development guidelines letter, we listed burn bush as a potential option, but in actuality, that's a regulated invasive species in your state. And such it would not be provided. Some final remarks, I would like to stress to the board. Originally, our client had looked to simply renovate the existing home on site. And talking with contractors, none of them were willing to fix the inside of the existing home, given concerns with how it may have been constructed previously, specifically concerns with its structural stability. Regarding the shoreline development guidelines themselves, it's my opinion that a lack of quantitative requirements needs to certain what the planning board wants difficult. In reality, the way they read is qualitative and therefore somewhat subjective in how they can be forced. If there were quantitative requirements, I could certainly leave the projects where only minimum requirements are being met for shoreline development guidelines. Then in the case of our client, as I described, you should have willingness to explore options and maximize potential of the lot through functional plantings and other plantings that makes sense on site. Like the stress also that the location of those potted plantings would be in the vicinity where lot coverage is currently accounted. So that really there's no increased lot coverage. At this time, I'd like to turn that discussion up to the board for any questions or concerns we have.
Okay, well, certainly give us a detailed description, Anthony, as to what you propose. I guess my concern is making sure that what you said is going to get done is on plan somehow memorialized. Because right now, we have not seen anything more than this and you're, like you said, you're generic landscape plan that you had. I think we need details as far as size and species, I don't think that was, I think we'd asked for that. We've seen that in the revised plan. Again, I'm not arguing with what you're proposing and you're certainly, I think certainly Brian has gone out of his way to consider, you know, compliance with our guidelines, but just want to make sure that what you're saying and what he's proposing is on a plan, so we can make sure. So I guess if it's up to the board, we could, I mean, I hate to set you back and, okay, bring us another plan in. If we could at least get what you're saying tonight on a plan and get that submitted and would be on discretion, I guess, chairman and our engineer to make sure that those provisions of landscaping are provided. Now, again, it's discretion of the board, if they want to see another plan, that's certainly their problem. So I guess I'll open it to the board, how, how comfortably you feel about what Tony's presented tonight and being assured that what he said is going to be, what it will be.
I agree with you in your assessment that we should have it on a plan to be able to align, you know, what we're signing off on, what we're approving with what will be implemented. It's consistent with previous projects on the lake shore, on, on, you know, like shore guidelines that we've reviewed, we've always had, you know, whether it be on a site plan or a landscape plan or, you know, some other visualization so that we really assess the shoreline guidelines.
I'm going to agree, I think they've, they've answered our question, you come back with what we requested. Say it's accurate, but just putting all the.
It's just that pencil, pencil or paper.
Yeah.
Described it, but we haven't actually seen it now.
Right.
You know, how, how flexible we want to be in terms of seeing it on a plan. What do we, what do we want to do, that we want to bring it back, do it again, or do you want it moved to the prerogative on itself and plans to make sure that it's correct?
I would choice B.
I trust you. I'd also like to have Kim and take a look at the species because she's an expert on once that comes into on the plan, just to make sure that it's not with known basis.
Right.
Just to clarify, when you were reading the graded driveway, that disappeared, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. It's chalked around it and I wanted to make sure that.
When I read it, I said, this is right, but I know I questioned the last time. So that's not partisan, okay? Mark, how do you feel?
I have a problem based in the assessment, I'm fine with him and Lance doing that.
You feel that what he's proposing verbally is adequate?
No, I think it needs to be on it.
No, but I mean, the, the type, the type of planning, the reasons for doing what he's going to do and the potted plants and the proposing, I guess, the.
But I'm trusting.
The Versithia and the Dogwood and.
I'm trusting the intent of you and Lance to look at the final set of plans and make the decision of, of sizing and things along those lines. And I agree that asking Kim to take a look at the species just to ensure that it, that means the criteria is set. Do I need to see the drawings? Not absolutely, because I trust that you understand what we're doing.
Thank you for that comment.
The intent I hear is what I hear today, I would be okay with it, it's.
Spend a moment, maybe come in with a condition.
So I guess.
And we, we certainly want to help you.
One question I had. Did, everything that you mentioned tonight, was that memorialized in a letter that was forwarded to the board?
Something about a, a redraft of the statement of shoreline guidelines out of, I'm trying to recall, I saw that.
If, if you're not actually.
It was the date on it.
November second.
Why don't we add that to?
This, I mean, the condition can be generated around that, but also generic enough to say to meet, like we have before, to meet the satisfaction of the chairman of the town engineer. What, what I initially put is, the updated landscaping plan is to be provided to address the planning board concerns as detailed at eleven nine twenty-two playing board meeting and as described by the applicant to the satisfaction of the chairman of the town engineer. I think that should also include. I think that should also include as referenced as detailed by the applicant in the letter dated November second.
Okay, we're getting there. So between what you've testified to tonight, what's in this letter? And as long as we get it on the plan, I think we've got everything pretty well. And subject to getting review.
You must have emailed us.
Rather than generating a card regarding, say like.
Was.
The types of species that will be shared and how they're treated, just the photos of like. Window boxes, for instance, those weren't emailed out earlier today, but I can email them.
Well, if that's what you, I guess, just wait until you decide what your schedule, your landscape schedule will be and then.
Yeah, because with the intent of using the sit, sorry, the deciduous shrubs, those are just like a few of the options considered.
They grow well in.
So.
I think these are either side of the steps or the Versithia and the.
Exactly.
The willows.
The species also, I believe, the willow, for instance, would be well, we saw.
So just. And then we, the existing house is white, white.
Yes.
It's white. What you proposed is not white. So in the latter. By doing so, our clients are emphasizing historical importance of the site by maintaining the existing color. But it's not the existing color.
It's, it's.
House is white.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's not exact.
So this is more of a beige, two, two or three tone tan and beige, which is more appealing, obviously, for the. From the lake to.
So.
Double it down a little bit. So those is not white. I mean, it's white, because the house now is.
Yeah, so that might not be a separate condition entirely.
I just, that was your first point in the letter.
This house is white, this rendering shows it is more of a beige.
Beige at least with the overhang, but more so off white with. More so off white beige with the stuff.
So it's not this. It's going to be something lighter than this.
No, it's supposed to.
Oh, okay.
That's right, right. And that's where I was, because I bet in the house is white, white. It's blizzard white, so this is not blizzard white. Clarify that it's not going to be white, because in your letter, it says it's going to be the existing color. Right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure it's not going to be white. That's. That view.
I think you should probably amend that, allow them to. To address.
Clarify what was. Testify.
Yes, yes. And if you want to cross reference, please, I'll reach.
And I, I mean, the potted plants are movable, they're fixed. Where are you putting potted plants?
So again, the way. Yeah, so like from instance.
One step is out to the wall.
So you see like the doors coming down to the rear yard here. So imagine potted plants along the stairs.
Oh, okay.
Towards the shrubs. But like you said, potted, then the potted plants, the enforceability of.
And their season too, so yeah. And you are talking about deciduous shrubs either side of the steps.
Yes.
Yeah, so they, they wouldn't have to be green in the winter, which, okay, that's.
Yeah, this was a. Running prepared by Morbi Door Effects. Perfect for the project, more so clarified. Parents of the house.
I just want to make sure that what you're showing us tonight, of course, on the record, is what you're going to do. Go out and we see something different, people get upset.
But ultimately, at the same time, I mean, it's how, but you were phrasing the condition, we have to. Have something before even lands that.
You are, yeah, no, no, certainly what you, what you described that I. It's much clearer that we can see that, as we said, on the, on the record, on the plan. Anybody else have anything on the landscape? About other issues? Lance's MRB was mostly stormwater management and you said that this was issues that could resolve.
Yeah, we should have left it. It was just basically saying that all of our comments have. Either way, that's fine. I can make sure you can, but we have. Are all of our.
I might did have a question as the prior presentation about the construction vehicles, because there's, you know, room on that road. Or so, that's been addressed, county. They've, construction vehicles during construction, because there's no place.
Right. So as part of, you know, from our standpoint, no, because the county still has to issue their permit. On, on the road and the driveway curvy and all that process. So until they issue it, we won't know. How they're going to, what they're going to allow, not allow in terms of construction.
Yeah, Paul, Paul's response basically meaning that there was no further comments in the site plan indicated. As discussed, the contractor will be required to obtain a highway work prior to beginning work. The application process will include a review of the means and methods for construction. To ensure adequate protection of the roadway, specifically the use of excavation and joint as never done in plans.
So as part of their review and approval results, they'll guide that.
Okay, just looking through other reviews from other people. County Road, County Public Works, we talked about, obviously, they're going to have to be involved since we're so close to the road. County Plan Board, their concern again was landscaping and shoreline guidelines. And they did recommend the Niles, assuming the majority seeming. And. Other than that. Take care of my notes. Anybody else have anything?
What about previous meetings? There was a question about the rooftop kitchen. And, and other activities that could or that would be visible from either side. Up there. Was that dressed, addressed to the. Group satisfaction? I think there were questions that we didn't answer, but just remember, I have notes here that stated it was tied to the rooftop kitchen and what was visible from that.
Yeah, we talked about the picnic activities on top of the roof. There is a, I think, is there a building grill or something, or is it just going to be a? There's got to be a, somebody had said there was a grill on the roof.
Says a rooftop kitchen.
It was like a big higher than the wall.
Consider it was whether or not that would be visible on the lakeside or not.
And we, I think we said it can't be any higher than the high. Now, I guess you put a table there and if you want to roll up the rolls. There's already a. That would probably be next on like.
There would be no, um, permanent fixtures exceeding. And again, Brian stressed he loved to have potted plants in the round of fronters that help screen some of the activities.
So plants of.
Is that railing set back from the edge of the roof where you could put. Potted plants between the edge of the roof and railing on the lakeside.
I don't think that's the intent. From Brian, it's more so the knee wall.
Yeah.
Um, along the. Northern and southern sides of the home, so without the railing. Are you using?
No, I was just thinking if, if the railing was set from the, the edge, then there'd be an area where you would put plants. Over. Yeah, I'm, I'm over designing this thing up. I'm just thinking out loud.
The roof has.
Hold me up when he builds an ocean.
There's, there's currently, if you look at the right side elevation, the railing goes, there's a, that part of the, there's a parapet that sticks out forward towards the lake on the house. And then that railing goes flush to the edge of that.
So it's flushing yet.
Right, so. How they do the, and this is why it's important to see it on the plan, because again, what the goal of the RLD in many ways is to reduce the overall impact of the building. To turn it to a more natural look. It'll be interesting to see how they do the flower boxes and plant boxes on the face of the building with the type of designs. As well, so I think that's why it's important to see those things.
Hang flower box. Excuse me, I will charge you. Alrighty. I think we. Equal something up. Anybody else have any other questions concerned on the plan itself? Okay, it's a type two seeker. And being it's type two and the, the application is somewhat straightforward. Second bundle resolution for both the seeker and the single stage site plan approval. And someone wants to make that motion?
Make that motion to approve twenty two dash zero three eight thirty six eleven hundred and sixteen as seeker type two action. And the stage site plan approval with, I'm assuming ten conditions.
I will second that. For the discussion. Okay, all good. Right? There you are, Mark. So you did, okay, so we've got a four O, that's a super majority in the motion carries. Okay, thanks. Alrighty. Just ratification. Next application, CPN twenty two oh fifty one is from Marathon. Engineering for the Shepherd and Burke property that we are familiar with. Having along to a ZBA hearing on the stream setback. Uh, next week. And then it'll be back to us on the following week, twenty second. So it'll be on our twenty second agenda to consider the site plan, assuming. Uh, that the applicant is successful in getting the stream setbacks. CPN twenty two oh sixty two Marathon Engineering. I represent an edge beer development. Property at, uh, yet to be assigned, addressed Portside Drive. Part of the uptown area, form based code zoning. And we, I believe, are back to us tonight to. Consider some sort of, I guess, at this point, an endorsement. Move on to the plant town board. So that they can take action to consider whether to come back to us as a site plan. So. Going through the procedures of the form base code. Uh, if you recall, board, that we looked at it as a sketch plan. We realized that to follow the. Protocol of the form base code that it did not meet the code in terms of the transparency and all the. Two, two variances. So we said we. Would have to go to the ZBA for adjudication before we could consider it further and it did go to the ZBA, ZBA grant the variances. And so it's back, we're back into the flow.
Yep.
On the, uh, on the procedures and. The next step would be eventually go to the town board.
Right, it's cute to go to the town board on the twenty first of this month.
Okay.
And.
And then back here.
Sure. Lead with us to be your.
We'll see again then.
And I'll acknowledge. Mild confusion on our part about what the town board's doing next, only because they did vote and approve when we saw them last. So I don't know what they're doing next. We're happy to go back to them, of course, but.
Right, so it was because of the variance need. And that fact that it was sketch, sketch at the time, it's really the formality of endorsing the final site plan. On the twenty first.
Okay.
And then.
That's what the flow chart.
That's our.
We were here last, we recognized that the town and zoning were kind of scheduled backwards from what the flow chart wanted. And there was a very carefully worded, non objection resolution, which we appreciate it. So this is to Donaldize and pass all T.
Absolutely, and to follow as, as carefully as we know how.
So we're sort of anticipating a conversation with the town board that says, this is what we talked about before. Playing would have seen this, assuming at the end of the night, playing would have seen this thumbs up so far, and then they're kind of just reauthorizing their approval or affirming their.
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
The only thing I will say that we had had a concern about it, though, is me, was the part. And I, I think you folks said that you would, you have research that shows that the point eight or whatever. Spaces per unit is adequate and you provide that to us. I don't think we've seen that.
You did, you, you did. It was sent to you.
Oh, was?
Yeah, absolutely. I saw all of you on an email and it's on the board page. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's the. Yeah, absolutely.
If you'd like to share, you can borrow my copy as well. So yes, they have, they have done research looking at post a ten other projects, I think. Getting a range of. How many parking spaces exist on the site for all users related to the number of rooms? And they determined that the, after they broke it down, the ratio of parking spots was actually much higher for senior. For projects than it was for college family, for all the projects that this ones. Um, I believe we were landing in point four, if I'm remembering correctly. I just gave you my copy. Um, and so we're well above what they're finding is the used ratio. Um, and we very personally said, well, we know this is what we need. We know we're not going to be one per, let's find that sweet spot in the middle that feels comfortable above what we're seeing. But not more than we need to pave. And then they went to the next step and went to the neighbors to Paul and said, look, if we're wrong, you seem to have run in your lot. Couldn't share. And Paul came along and gave them a letter, said, sure, we're happy to loan you indefinitely ten spaces should you need them. Which again is above beyond what we feel we're going to need. So we feel very comfortable with the number of spaces we have on site and we have the buffer.
So these all site, site spaces would be. Constructed or are they just be.
They currently exist.
Current.
All they currently exist.
On, on the neighbors' property, the DePaul Charlie Station Apartments next door has agreed. For this project to use ten spaces on our property should it ever be needed and rise.
What I, if I may, I would say before that November meeting with the planning board, I think it would be helpful to have an updated. Parking lot plan, it's called, site plan, it shows that, because the last one that we saw didn't really have the appropriate handicap parking spaces. Or at least by, by code requirements. Um, it didn't have the, the EV parking spaces that I thought you guys had identified. Um, I know you're going to have some loading and unloading, so I don't know if there's ability for vehicles to come in and blow like. Mowing the grass, those type of vehicles, they typically take up parking spaces. So I know that there's some way to identify where you intend those vehicles to be stored during the temporary hours that they'll be there. Um, and then what is your total number of parking spaces being provided? And then based on then, then we can do a comparison to the number.
Sure.
That's identified in here and then that, that way we have a working number just to make sure we're, we're doing apples to apples.
And I believe we did provide an updated site plan.
Okay.
I feel comfortable that we've met the stated requirements for accessibility. There are two different. There is a requirement, if you have one parking space per apartment and then there's another apartment. And we can, okay, um, so we can, I can talk to Matt Thomas who's on the, he's on the web exercise as well, or on Zoom, excuse me. We can show where we have, for instance, two extended fire access lanes. That those could easily be used for the lawn company or whatever to park for an hour while we're there. So yeah, we're, we're up to date with this letter with what our site line currently does. And I know we do also have a, a comment letter from you guys that we're working through.
Yeah.
None of which scared us. It was a lot, a lot of checkboxes. I hope we didn't show this. It's nature to show. Little engineering comments for catching up.
No, I appreciate it. I didn't realize you had submitted revised plans, sorry.
Sure. And we have not addressed your comments.
No, that's fair. I think the biggest one, at least from, for the purpose of conversations with the board was the breaking line. I think it'd be easier to discuss seeing an updated plan, but being that it's right now.
Our, our files are lacking a lot of information. Does not have that. You said it was amended site plan too? When was that submitted?
We submitted all those at the same time to, to Sean.
So it was around thirty-first of October? That, that was the day of the letter.
The eighth.
Last thing we have is the MRV review. Our decision back in September. We're. Dancing in the dark here. Well, we're going to need all that before. The site plan review on the twenty-second, so. If you've submitted, then it's just very good. But we can see it.
Guys, this is Matt Tomlinson as well from Marathon. Sorry, I'm not with you tonight. As Dan mentioned, we're also working through the MRV comments. I anticipate by middle of next week, we'll have the response to his comments. Plans that were revised with that and anything that is not in your application of record, we'll make sure to submit extra copies of as well.
Yeah, from, from my purposes, a response letter, I think is really what I, I think helps. And then if there's anything additional planned, as you guys think is important enough to submit, as long as the board gets it in advance of the meeting. That works, but from my perspective, a response letter and this parking plan, I thought were too big.
Yeah, coming in, obviously, we know we're working with you first time through the form-based code and it is. Lighter on, you know, absolute numerics. There are certain things you want to hit and we knew where we couldn't hit them. We went to the zoning boards, worked through those and we. Granted the variances we needed. And other than that, it is, it's conversational like we're doing about parking. Does it feel right? Does the math work out? And so that's where we have the report of the research that. Edgar did for that. So yeah, we're, we agree, you need to have that information in your hands. And we'll make sure that the counts on our plans are matching what's in the letter.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember from that last meeting, I don't think, well, we talked about the. I know Mark is concerned about complete streets. How much that applies here on the distant street. Something I guess.
Yeah, it's. I mean, we kind of have a limited ability to impact that too much. We are completing the sidewalk that is coming from either property into ours so that we're. Completing the pedestrian activity to the wider community. We're providing bike access for our residents, bike storage for our residents. Providing the loop circulation for vehicular circulation for fire, fire emergency personnel circulation. And, and really it's sort of a. Not rural, not urban, kind of in-between sort of site. I believe we're meeting the intent of that requirement with our design.
Yeah, the, this is Matt again. I had some conversations with Sean and I, I'm not sure if she's in the room, but the. The complete streets is really for subdivision or projects that contemplate road improvements and that, that is not. This project's kind of outside the scope, other than the pedestrian improvements that Dan was mentioning.
That's an important segment of form-based code. I mean, that's something that is called out specifically in form-based. I, I also struggle, I understand that the ZBA has. Allowed for variances, but especially on our first project related to. A code that we're all still learning to be offering variances. I do struggle with that.
Which, which of the two variances were both?
Specifically the, the, the fifty percent, the fifty percent to twenty-five percent reduction. You through. That comes in.
Well, I think Dan, and I'm sure you already just ZBA is the reason. It's structural.
Yeah, I mean. The basic reality is in this, in mid-rise multifamily construction. It's going to be built out of wood. That, that is, that is what is economically viable for market rate for mid-rise. Multifamily construction and that type of construction needs more wall than not in order to do its job vertically. Just gravity-wise and in terms of resisting wind and earthquake loads. We don't have a bunch of plates, but. Code tells us to react to it regardless. And you end up needing two, too high to one wide and no narrower chunks of wall to make that work when you get into these higher. And that just limits how many. And the other side of that is the use as residential, privacy is a big concern. And so what we have seen and what we demonstrated to Sean is that very typical transparency in. Well-designed. Being respectful of their contact to multifamily buildings is in the twenty to maybe thirty percent range. Fifty percent transparent is not. A residential transparency. And so. And we provided four different project examples in, informally in talking with Sean, he's professionally professional, not specific to this project. Sort of demonstrating a range of reasonable quality designs. That are all in that transparency range, that nineteen percent is our neighbor. Under old code here and up to, I think we got one up to about thirty percent, stretching some things honestly. And so the. My position as professional is that the intent of the transparency requirements is one we agree with. The numbers assigned don't match the use or the construction type commensurate with the, with the use. So it's, I would humbly request you to see a lot of variances, various requests for that for. Buildings of this size and type of use, because that number isn't a viable number.
Then have we designed our form base code specification incorrectly?
Absolutely. I think that that's, I mean, I think, I don't want to say incorrect. In that this, it's not real world. I mean, it, it, you know, it sounded good. It probably was a, you know. Another community or maybe a more urban community, which we can't fulfill that. So I think.
To be more than commercial.
Absolutely. So it, it may just be the fact that we separate. It's, it's separate the transparency for different types of uses.
And you do have a, like I do, the seventy percent requirement for commercial. So dropping down to fifty feels like a big drop. And, and the reality is twenty feels like very solid. But again, if you look at it and I. I welcome you to share my examples with the board.
I absolutely, if you'd like.
I'm looking at doing that. If you look at the examples that are in that point to thirty percent range, they don't feel like bunkers. They don't feel solid. And blocked away from the community. They feel like residential multifamily, recently well-designed projects. Trying to be humble because I've designed them. That's how I know what the examples are. That's how I know what the math is. But I put care into the work I do and try to reflect the community around them. And it, it's just real that that fifty percent number that feels so much smaller than commercial. Isn't actually small enough for how these are actually built and how people actually live. So I understand the concern of, hey, this is the first time through. We already have this crazy big variance. I, I just submit that it's a, a number that needs to be tweaked in the code.
Commercial businesses are not looking for privacy. Residential isn't. They are looking for privacy, so. Types of uses and different applications I could see.
And if you do your one to two-story single-family home. Getting closer to fifty percent is a much easier situation structurally. And in certain cases, might be totally fine, a big wide-open living room with a whole bunch of daylight and then. The little tiny private bedrooms that are facing the backyard, you know.
And I will say, this is a former, the factory apartments.
Form Street. Now it's shaded, it's shaded, but I'm sure at night it's.
Well, what is that percentage? Because that's, I know that example well too. I wouldn't personally want.
Have you been over to Don Lash's property?
That's got to be much higher.
Overall, the whole building?
No, first floor is noticeable. I think the other floors are okay, but it's just all glass on the first floor.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially that southern building. But right next to the coffee shop.
It's like, it's like it might be a little bit of a, right at the edge of a commercial to a residential district.
Yes, it, it's.
That's a commercial that became residential.
I, I have a project in another town in the middle of a, a commercial core, in the middle of Schenectady. And on that one. Everything around us was commercial buildings with that. Wide open glass. And so we had ground floor apartments. We designed wide open glass with solid walls behind. Because we needed to give the appearance to match our context and then spend the extra money on that storefront lacing and then build solid walls behind them to give the privacy.
And that's actually what I would have expected the intent of the code to be, because we don't. By design, we don't care what happens inside the space within reason, right? So I would have expected that based on the amount of effort that went into form-based code.
In this particular site, in this particular context, that commercial appearance doesn't match what's happening around. This is surrounded by residential properties. And there is a maximum opacity in this form-based code, so we couldn't use the same trick here. In that other project, there was not a code guiding us. It was the right move for that context. In this case, the right move for the context was to match the other multifamily buildings around us and then stretch it to get us close to. The percentages that we could for us.
Okay, is there anything else we have to do tonight?
Guys, this is Matt Tomlinson. Sean, I think you were out of the room, but there was a comment relative to complete streets. I just would like to have a little discussion on that. To make sure we've addressed the comment or the question.
What was the question?
Adding bike lanes or other improvements to Parkside Drive itself, which we answered that by saying we're providing in-board. Bike parking, pedestrian movement and completing the pedestrian route with the sidewalk. But it sounded like maybe there was still another question.
Yeah, and it's such a project that's not creating new roads.
Right, and the intent. Parkside Drive is, is existing and we're not asking developers to upgrade. To complete streets. New constructions, absolutely. New construction of a new road, yes.
That is not true. We ask for variances for sidewalks and everything all the time. We ask for right-of-way. Increases for things like sidewalks.
Well, that is true in that they are putting sidewalks in.
I understand that. We stated that we want to move towards complete streets. And this is one of the areas that we have cited as wanting that. So as uptown. As a result, we should then expect that we upgrade that area to that. That's what the expectation of the planning board is. So that would mean that we had access for bicycle and pedestrian traffic through the area. The only way that ever happens that fully serve the process and as my understanding is that uptown is one of those areas that we said we were going to do that. Yes.
After the last, after the last meeting, I did look through the form-based code and did not see. A reference to complete streets or adding improvements to existing roadways. And again, I'm just throwing that out there to keep the discussion going.
We do have the complete streets plan. But I mean, that's a, that's a paradigm shift, I would say, in that. Are we, are going to start asking private developers to pay for.
Highway management plan.
Right.
Determine what, what roads do we want to have with streets and where.
Right.
And I could see the town at some point. And they maybe already said that Parkside Drive at some point is going to be. Constructed to a complete street design. But that would be.
But that's. That's town road, right, right.
I could see if we were building a new road. It's running like it's one of the other projects. Yeah, but I'm thinking within the form-based code area, that other project. That would have, it's a new road. It would have to be to a cross-section that meets the complete design standards and. But as far as existing roads, I think that's, that's the difference. It could certainly qualify as a complete street at some point. And but how we get that done? Maybe there's a escrow that's a contribution from the developer that if and when the town ever.
Well, it goes in for space at that point, wouldn't it? Because it's going to require additional space on top of the traditional sidewalk. So it'd be an easement for space, just like we've been doing on sidewalks.
Yeah, okay. Think that could be done except.
Well, there's our G D's been there and for our G D, so that's not even a possibility.
Right, our sidewalk and our building is already behind. An easement from our G D and if, if anyone looks at the existing Google view or Bing view is up to date. Google Street is not, but the sidewalks on either side of us are already pushed back on the other side of the drainage swell from the existing street. And so we're connecting that. We would not be. Limiting the width of the street. Because we're already on the far side of the drainage swell and then between our building and the street is that our G D easement, which is why we need the other variance. We couldn't get close enough because of the R G D.
So what's your cross-section right now from basic curve? To the building. Right, basic curve, okay. Oh, okay.
You'll be putting the. There, there's no curb on that street. Okay, it is an uncurved street.
Yeah, we are, we are twenty feet from the right of way. And the road is approximately twenty feet from the right of way. So we're about forty feet from the edge of pavement.
Okay, thank you.
And within that forty feet, you're going to put a sidewalk, correct?
It's about fifteen feet from the building. Does that sound about right, man?
Correct, the sidewalk matches the existing ends of sidewalk like Dan mentioned. I believe that's one foot inside the right of way. So that's about.
Fifteen to twenty feet.
Twenty feet from edge of pavement roughly.
Well. We're going along with what you're saying, maybe. What is outside the. Easement, utility easement. Part of that could be dedicated. Reserved. For future highway purposes, which could include. The implementation of a complete street at some point by the town in the future.
And that's already all public right of way. That's not ours. It's not ours to give or deny.
Okay, so that's the twenty feet, the twenty feet is there.
Right.
From then the, then the easement at twenty feet and the twenty-foot utilities goes right to the face of the building.
Right, right. We are a foot less from the utility. So essentially from the property line, there's twenty feet before the pavement, on public right of way. And then there's about twenty feet to our building, to all the R G Ds.
So the proposed plan actually reserves an additional six feet. In sidewalk easement. So you have twenty-six feet to the backside of sidewalk that's reserved. To the town for potential future improvements.
Your, your revised plan is up there.
You've got.
Scroll down.
Probably two more, yeah. One more, there you go.
So you can see then pavement line. And I believe there's like dirt between pavement and then dirt and then drainage swell. And the property line is just outside the sidewalk and there's that twenty-ish feet we're talking about. And then all of this is the fifteen to twenty-foot wide tapers easement with our G D. And we are, excuse me, center line. And we are hugging that as close as we possibly can. And so to your point, any bike lane would be out here, there's already public right of way. Which, which is where we, we've kind of done what we can do. We, we don't, we don't. Touch the road or. And that is also why the, the twenty foot is the back of the build-to zone. And it may be seventy-five percent within it. We can only get fifty-eight percent within it because of the curve in the easement. That was the second.
R G H.
They're, they're okay with the sidewalk being on their easement. I believe we have to have a novel agreement system. You repair it if they have to bust it up. But, but frankly, part of our issue was that they put their lines right here. They put them as close to our side of easement as we could have possibly asked them to when they built that back under the old code. When no one was thinking building to be up against the street like this.
So we have the same situation at the rear of the property with a gas line easement and the town's sanitary easement over there. Surface improvements are allowed over the easements.
Right, yeah, in all cases, as long as it's not a built structure, surface improvements are, you could just have a agreement with utility. It's ours to repair if they have to break.
It's like the property next to the town wall. The reason it's said fallow for so many years was because it.
That's what we discovered from the first plan that we sent to you in a very short time and then we found another reason, found another reason in our site.
So I guess it's our job to come up with the best plan we can do to this challenging site. Alrighty, so. Just look at the flow chart real quick and I guess the only thing is we have to. Maybe we already have. Provide a recommendation to the town board. To. Does the plan board determine the proposal complies with the minimum requirements of the F C C district? Originally, it was a no. So that's why I had to go to Z B A. Now they've got their relief. It's back to us if we think it does and the planning board makes our recommendation to the town. And the town board will take it up on the twenty-first and then come back to us on the twenty-second. Okay. So again, do we have to take anything formal or is, is what we have. Standing adequate.
Last time I sent them the minutes, I don't know if we get this, John, could we do a?
This was just a something in the minutes of consensus.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what we said.
Yeah, it was a consensus, yeah.
Yeah, so I would do the standing thing this time.
It was a statement of non objection. At that time, because we were sketch planning, we were out of order and.
Well, I, I think we can just say playing word feels now it's still a point we can. Go to the place or town board and, uh, for its, uh. They, they really don't review it, I guess, and just. Sort of bless it and move it back to us, so. But the minutes reflect that, Josh. And the decision sheet, so we're like. Okay, anything else, uh, anything you need from us?
So, uh, when we see you on the twenty-second would be a vote.
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, hopefully we'll. Uh, if you're going to comment on Lance's. Review, just a comment letter responding to each item would be better than submitting another revised point.
Of course, we're working on it right now and if, if updated plan is, uh, an appropriate part of that response, we'll provide it if the letter is the best. Then what we gave you, uh, end of the month.
Well, probably coming out of the twenty-second, we, you'll have to do a plan revision, but if we based on the whatever conditions. Come out of, uh, our discussions, okay? All right, very good. Thanks, good to see you again.
Absolutely, thank you everyone.
And I. Alrighty. Back to the agenda. With new, new public curts and new new segment, new sketch plans. We have an extension request from Mark's Engineering. Uh, representing the, the Metros property out on Crystal Road. Uh, requesting. A ninety day extension from the. Current hundred and eighty day. Exploration with first tonight. Um. I think we're also very with Metros is. This is the project that went through a P T L review. Got approval from, from this, uh, this group. Uh, so. Oh, go ahead, Brennan, you, you can.
Chuck, I give you stuff that you where you were at. We've got. County, County Sewer, they've approved everything. Uh, the D E C has approved the sewer extension. Department of Health has approved the water supply extension. Department of Health should issue a realty subdivision approval here. I'm gonna hope in two weeks, that's the last hurdle. Uh, we've got approvals on the conservation easement languages from. Both, uh, town attorney, Chris, and, um, also the. Uh, client, my client's attorney, um. Some formalities, just getting signatures on the plans. It should not take ninety days to. Close up, uh, the longest thing that's gonna probably hold us up is, uh. Town board voting in the easements. Which would be December nineteenth, hopefully.
Okay. Uh, so you're further along, you never missed, right?
There you go, that's a good way to put it.
Okay. You're moving in the right direction. Well, that's great. Um, did I say something and I don't want to speak out of school, something about, uh. Uh, this, this, this property might be developed by Redman?
Uh, that's, that's a possibility.
Okay, which are the owner of the hammock, right?
Uh, they in the cottages.
Okay, there's synergy there, I guess. Uh. Okay, you, uh, any questions of Brennan as far as the reason for the extension? I think you feel comfortable with. This will be the first and only extension required. Hopefully, do we have the right dates here? I'm seeing November sixth is the expiration. Yet the agenda shows November ninth.
It's the ninth.
Okay, yeah, the information I had.
So that moves the, uh. The expiration. Three more days to the seventh of February.
So I have a question, comment, full transparency. I, since. We first granted this, I am now resident of the hammocks. Facing this property back. So I would refuse myself. So, and I do have one question, um. And I'm, I guess I'm happy to know that Redman is developing it now. Question I have is, is there going to be any type? Of a barrier? Are they leaving any of the hedgerow, any of the trees between the hammock property? I haven't been building three specifically, but along there. To provide any kind of a buffer between the hammocks and this project. And I think I asked at one point, before I was even living there, is there gonna be any type of? Barrier? And I think they said, no, everything's gonna be clear cut. So is that something that could be? Explained further or do we not know or what's the plan for that?
Brennan, can you address it?
Uh. Yeah, um, I hope this doesn't impact the extension, uh. But the, uh, some of the vegetation along that line is on the hammocks property and not on the property being developed. Um, the eastern side of the street. Little bit grass, well. The, uh, slight berm. Um, there. There's no plantings. Proposed on that berm, uh, relying on vegetation that's on the hammocks property. To, uh, buffer that.
Yeah, I think that's. What we discussed as we went through the application or through the approval process. Because I think most of that vegetation, as you said, is on the hammocks property. Little of any one, uh, the metro's, bro.
Yeah, and I mean. The, uh. This not typical to provide buffers between residential properties. Either, I mean, that maybe the hammock should have provided buffers to this property if that was the case.
Maybe the Redmans will. Yeah, mine. So, uh, any further discussion on the extension? Okay, did I get a motion? Okay, I need a motion to provide the ninety day extension to February seventh.
Uh, we'll make that motion for that, uh, ninety day extension on twenty-two dash year two six. For, um, fifty-one hundred and one fifty Bristol Road.
Okay, have a second, second. Motion second, uh, with a conclusion. Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. First. You have three votes? Okay, thanks, Brennan.
Yeah, just Chuck, you probably, probably aren't talking about the J T properties tonight.
No, that's next.
Yeah, I just saw it on the agenda. I didn't know if you actually stick around and talk about that or not.
No, that's just, uh, uh, our upcoming. Yeah.
Fair enough.
That's so we can prepare for you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right, good night, guys.
All right, good night.
The expiration's February seventh.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's get approval of the minutes last meeting, twenty-fifth. I'll make a motion to approve it. Other than job well done.
Second.
Okay, so motion second, old favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Money to be released. Uh, okay, we've got two referrals from. Town board, uh, what have you to do with, uh. Mr. Venetia's property out on Brickyard. Uh, requesting a rezoning from industrial M U O. And to, uh, amend zoning map. And, uh, I call our town there.
Thank you, chairman. If you recall, we discussed this at length at the last meeting, uh. Let me back up. The original application, which came in, uh, the town board showed a small section of residential. While you were reviewing it as a referral from the town board, you asked the applicant to provide a little bit more global. Vision as well as a narrative of justification of why, uh. A rezoning of forty-two, forty, approximately forty-four acres, uh, from industrial to residential or is warranted. Yeah, applicant sent in a revised plan. Uh, and a letter. I guess of intent. And. I'm gonna advise this board not to act on that actual conceptual plan because. It is, there's multiple owners, not just the applicant here. Um, and if, if that is the case, if that's what Rocco wants to do, rezone that entire area, then we need to start over with a new. Application, Rocco, with all of the property owners shown. And basically start again at town board. So that's my. Summary is analysis of where we're at.
So he, has he, he's amended his application to not just include phases one and two, but include the whole forty-four acres?
No, can I, can I, can I butt in here? Can I butt in?
Just, that's up to the chairman.
Uh, yeah, why don't you butt in?
Okay, I'm gonna butt in. I apologize. Good, good evening, folks, but. I'm not. I haven't changed my request. My request is those twenty-two lots. Um, you asked me for something. A plan of what I might ultimately do. So that's what I did. I mean, I'm not asking for that now. In fact, I don't even own all that land. Now I have development agreements on it. And to be honest with you, if I can get this done, I'll probably kind of stop for a while. So it could be my son fifteen, twenty years from now, you know, pursuing this. So absolutely, my idea has not changed. The only thing that changed was you asked me to do something, I did it, and now. All of a sudden, we're, we're rolling with this four hundred lot subdivision, which, which is absolutely not happening at this point. But I'm kind of perplexed about that.
So your application is not any different than what you had proposed to us, uh, originally and to the board. Uh, true, we did ask. In, 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 considering the, the, the two sections you had shown, we had asked for a sort of a conceptual idea of what you intend to do. For the entire property, which is something that I think we had, the, the plain word had asked for back in two thousand twenty, when we looked at this the last time. But you did come back with a conceptual drawing of. Uh, if, if you were successful in getting the rezoning for phases one and two. That there's a possibility that this is the way the, the balance of the property would look.
It was my understanding that's what you wanted, but it wasn't my understanding or wasn't my desire to move forward with all of that at this point.
Okay. So on the table. Uh, before the. Town board and before this board is just phases one and two to have that change from industrial to M U O, right?
That's correct.
Uh. That's different than how you interpret or?
Well, my question, I have many, but one important one is, how do you recommend a rezoning for a portion of one parcel? Proceedurally. How do we do that? Is that even, I mean, that's, we can't do that.
You resell the whole parcel.
You resell the whole parcel or you subdivide.
Or she would be subdivided off.
Right, I mean, that.
Okay, well, that should have been. Brought up, I guess, originally before town board considered. That it was. It was a, a rezoning of a. Parcel or partial, so I guess, yeah, it's a shame it's gotten to this point, uh.
Well, I think also with that. You know, and that's where you're at is the justification. I think that's. And how do you? How does this board analyze? Without, one, the conceptual plan for the grand scheme, but also without, uh, an analysis. Of, you know, why? Why do we need it?
So there's the issue of trying to rezone a. Partial or partial.
Right.
Okay, and then there's the issue of is what he's proposing in terms of the use, uh, something that would be, uh. Acceptable. And in compliance with our property plan uptown code or what. Can we maybe work toward the use issue and talk about that? And then whether he can actually, if the town can actually change the zoning map. Uh, from a industrial to M U O for a parcel, parcel, that's something that can be addressed with.
Right, and that's what I was gonna say is that if you wanna look at the more. Pressing issue.
Yeah.
Right now.
Planning aspect.
Well, maybe part of your recommend, whatever the recommendation is.
That's part of the.
We recommend that subdivision occur in order to accommodate to be zoning. Or whatever, that could be something the board often will do, I guess. Part of that, part when that comes.
But time wise, in terms of the block, you need to, this board needs to make some sort of recommendation.
Okay, was, is the board comfortable with?
About what?
Talking about the use. Uh, tonight and what he's proposing for just phases one and two, the five lots out on. Airport and the nineteen lots on the new street.
I'm sort of big, man.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah.
I mean, are we ready to talk about it? So that we can give the town board a recommendation as to, uh. Have a feel that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and then there's two phases. I should open both.
Yeah, I can open the big one.
Thank you. Yep. This is his proposal, right? That's what went to the town board?
Yes, definitely.
Hey, uh, one thing I will say, Rocco, uh. The letter you submitted with the. On the twenty-sixth of October is the exact same letter you submitted. Back originally for just, you know, for the original phases. So I, I don't. Feel you gave us that more, much more justification as to why you feel, uh, this should be rezoned from industrial to, uh. To, uh. To M U O specifically residential.
I, 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 I guess if you want more information, go read your, um, report you paid all that money for.
You know. And I think we mentioned at the last meeting that. Um, yes, we, you know, develop all of those, you know, plans and. Codes and, you know, all those things that. Are used to support the decisions that we make here, but. I think at the last meeting we had said. You know, we need you to present that to us, you, you to, you know, present those.
Yeah, I mean, respect, respectfully, as single family homes, we can't sell the industrial, nobody wants the industrial land, it's too chopped up, it doesn't work. And the reason the town board originally did all this work was. To accommodate the single family homes in there. So we're just following up on what you guys kind of said. I mean. I can write an elaborate letter if that's what you want and we could just go another month, but I just assume not do that. I just assume go back to the town board. Um. I mean, this, this is not rocket science here, I mean. You know. And then I don't understand the problem with rezoning a part of a parcel. I mean, everything in the town is part of a parcel, you know. Um.
So forty plus acre. Parcel, we're looking at one. Piece of it here, we, we wanna look at the whole thing, but we wanna. Um, we set this on.
No, that, that's why I made that plan. If you want me to, if you want me to show a development of the whole forty-four acres, I can do that, you know. Um, not a problem.
I thought that was what we asked for.
May, may I ask, Sean, with the, the larger plan and maybe I'm just not following, but, um, the larger plan. Um, with the town homes, the, the duplexes, the single families all kind of extended all the way out. So as I understand, like, this horseshoe of it all, right, like, that's the current, you know, forty-four and change acres with, and then. So what's, what here is represented that's not. A part of what. Rocco owns as his property.
Oh, uh, these. Uh, these.
Are you asking me something I?
Yeah, uh, all right, so we're, Dukowski is up here.
That's Dukowski and that's Jones and Dukowski.
Also, yeah, which I don't know how far down that falls, but so. I would say, what, maybe a third, maybe a little less is owned by other entities. Now, this is Farnsworth. Or is this yours?
I I own that where the blue houses are, that's Farnsworth.
This is Farnsworth, this is.
Billiter, billiter.
Farnsworth is. Here, yeah, and so. Portions of, yeah.
All right, well, this, this is sort of my read on it. We as a board was, we were asked to provide an advisory report back to the town board within sixty days. Uh, regarding our thoughts as to, uh, whether this rezoning, uh, to allow for a layout. As shown in phases one and two by by Rocco, uh, with with. The, in compliance with, uh, most of the documents that the town uses in plenty purposes, including. Obviously, the zoning map, and the zoning map does allow it to be converted to an M U O. Uh, it's industrial, but it's, uh, it's got the M U O overlay. Uh, obviously, the latest revision, the comprehensive plan, see if and how that addresses this particular area. Uh, the uptown, uptown study was done back in two thousand nineteen, and I think, for Sean's analysis, she had. Uh, quoted that, uh, frequently in terms of, uh, what it had stated. Obviously, our form-based code, which really doesn't apply to this property because the form-based code, uh, ends. To the east of the pink line I'm showing here, so, uh. That's essentially what we were looking at in terms of how we would approach this property as to whether it would be changed. I had looked at some positives for the change, um, and these were. Items that have been brought up previously in previous discussions of this lot. Uh, it would increase connectivity of the street system, again, looking. At the overall with no guarantees that anything beyond the gas line easement would ever be built in the future or built to this. This lab, at least it's a concept. It generates a tax base quicker than the industrial property would. I just feel this, this, if it stays industrial, it's gonna lay fallow out there for years, um, we can. Make it into something and develop it and create a tax base. And I think here, a developer has come to us with an opportunity to do that. He's even presented us with a builder, Mr. Henkel, who's willing and able to, uh, to move ahead with it. The only N R I impacts that I can see from this is maybe some silver maple ash. And that, is that one?
No, no, it's not on phase one or two, it's over on the west side.
Yeah, but okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at everything now.
We're showing it, well, listen, we're showing that as part of conserve land, so. It should be, it should, it's within our conservation lands.
Okay, look, I'm on a roll here, hang on, uh, walkie, uh, provide for walking to the uptown area.
Not a problem, we we can, we we can do that.
Uh, we'd have a sidewalk system to get us to and from, you know, down Airport Road to three thirty two. And also provide possible lighting, uh, there could be a public transit stop. At the intersection of Airport and the and the new street, and it does have a certain percentage of open space, it's maybe not forty percent, but. There, no requirement, or in the M U O, if I'm correct, this board's actual percentage.
I thought it was thirty percent.
Okay, well, then it would have to comply with standalone.
We're, we're all, we're about thirty five percent right now.
In phase one and phase two?
Yeah, we got that big area to the northeast, so.
Oh, that's close, that's to the north, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would imagine, the hard part about this is we get. We have to look at the whole picture, but at the same time, we'll only look at phase one, because I don't know if the rest of it will ever get to, you know. My understanding is we don't know when that will occur, so I think some of the M U O criteria. Has to be looked at just in phase one and phase two, because that's all currently is being requested to be resolved.
Yes.
So whatever the criteria is for M U O, has to be met in phase one and in phase two.
A minimum of forty percent open space.
Okay, looking at the negatives of doing the rezoning, uh, obviously, it's, it's been pointed out, it would be a loss of industrial land. Uh, we do have a very limited amount of industrial land in town, uh, is it, is it, uh. You know, the balancing act that we give up industrial for the future, for residential in the present, uh, you know, that, that's something we have to consider. Uh, the proximity to the airport, we, we talked about, uh, the noise, I know Bob Minzer, you've talked to Bob Minzer, right, to, uh. Rocco and regarding.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and our whole plan is to keep everything away from the airport, so.
Okay, still, it's, it's an issue, it's something that has to be brought up. Proximity to the school garage, certainly have to make sure there's enough buffering, uh, for that, excuse me. And Pactiva's across the street, so you, you do have industrial uses in the area. And that results in noise, possible noise, there's a lot of tractor trailer movement on Airport Road. Again, that's the nature of, of the area we're in, but that's just something that, you know, you're, you're sort of. Uh, blending, uh, residential with, uh, some of semi, semi-industrial use, so. Those are the factors I looked at, looking at the positives versus the negatives, and. I, I think, you know, the residential would be a. Way to go on this thing. I, I, I would certainly recommend this board that we consider that type of use. Uh, given the factors involved, I realize we're giving up the, the industrial, but I don't think. I can't see that could ever be in, in developed as industrial. And I think this would be a transition between the uptown area. And the non-residential school, you know, school garage and areas to the, to the west.
So to speak there, we're, we're talking from here down, right?
No, you're talking from the east, yeah.
So when you talk about losing industrial, we're only talking about this place.
Yeah, but then you get to the upper part, again, I don't wanna get into the other forty four acres, that's a residential topic. It's not industrial.
No, it's not, not along.
So Chuck, just to address, address a couple of things, when you speak of adding a tax base. For every, every dollar spent, every dollar gained in tax base for residential costs a dollar sixteen.
In school.
In cost to service that residential property, so from a tax base perspective, there is no gain. Around the airport right now, there's a concerted effort to try to continue to develop that, to have that more of a. A central area for airport services and use to that, so they want to expand that. That'll end up conflicting with, conflicting with this. When you look at the industrial purposes, for that same. It costs thirty cents for every dollar compared to the dollar sixteen for residential. So for overall benefit, that becomes a negative to have a single family residential.
Is that assuming, is that thirty cents assuming that the utilities are available?
It says median costs provide public services for each dollar of revenue raised. I'm assuming that's all public services. So I, I do think, in my opinion on rezoning is that it should. Be a benefit to the comprehensive plan. And, and I don't think that we understand that yet here, I don't see the benefit to the comprehensive plan.
Well, comp plan is kind of new on this area.
But it for the comp plans for the town.
Yeah, I, I know, yeah.
And we're talking about a rezoning, so if we're gonna think.
The town, you're thinking that it's better to be left industrial, possibly not developed, then. Have it developed as, as a moderate.
Or if it's going to be rezoned to allow it, then I think that it should benefit the comprehensive plan. So if we need affordable housing, something that we struggle to also identify, source for that, if we need high density housing. Great source for that, if, I mean, if we need something commercial that fits within the comprehensive plan, that's. A great source for that.
It's not, that's not the view the town fathers have, though. Their view was to make it residential, that's why they created the M U O. I mean, listen, I mean the town board respectively, not town fathers, but just, just, just so you know. I bought this land based on the fact that you did put a M U O in there. To go back to industrial now and not even give me a shot at that, at the residential, uh, seems a little. Short, short sighted, um, and, and the fact that. I know the gentleman on the left there says that there's all this industrial stuff at the airport, come on. They ain't doing nothing at the airport, they're just kind of sitting there, they can't even build a hangar, they can't put the sewer in there, they can't do anything. And all they're doing is handcuffing me, uh, by letting me wait for one hundred years. My great, great grandchildren could maybe put in a, uh, a second bus garage or some, some, something like that. Um, this doesn't make sense to me, but that, you know, whatever. The reality is, there's no movement at all. It's for sale right now as industrial, and we don't have any takers.
Again, I, I had a tough time trying to determine what the comp plan intended. Were this particular area, usually.
It's not clear.
It's not clear. Usually, comp plans have a future land use for it. Now, we do have the uptown.
The uptown study is very clear.
Yeah, it's very clear.
Well, it's clear in that it, it shows a, a, a spact of residential on that northwest side. That's the plan that I was, you know, was most solidified.
But the uptown study was mostly related to transportation, moving people, I, I. I didn't sense it, you know, land use.
Let's focus on density projects that required higher density, that is a key piece of the uptown plan.
The complies, the only thing that the complies, I think, knows as, is that it chronicles the loss. Of industrial land, I did not see any, maybe Doug knows something I don't, but any recommendations. Specifics to this area, I mean, there's some global action items, but. It was hard to glean anything from it.
Again, I, I guess I just looked at it as with the form-based code to the east. Industrial and the non-residential to the west, this would be a transition.
So if we discuss recommending not allow it, that land could possibly sit. They can continue to sit. Nothing would be done, because there's no industrial interest at this point, according to Rocco and what we also know is important.
Well, it's twenty five years on the market, so there you go.
Yes.
And then, and then, and then Doug, Doug Finch got a couple hits, but it, but it's woefully, woefully horribly. Unable to, unable to support utilities, there's not enough electric, there's not enough water. And you're never gonna put the kind of facilities in here for forty four acres to. You, you, you're not gonna spend twenty five million dollars to support forty four acres for industrial development, it ain't gonna happen. So, so, so it's kind of a catch twenty two, you, if you deny this, you leave me stuck with a piece of land that I bought. That the town indicated that I could go residential with an M U O, they passed M U O, I bought it. And then, and then, okay, we gave it a chance, Doug wanted me to try to do industrial, I did. We, we brought in a couple of big hitters and, and they said, no, it's not gonna work, we can't get the electricity, we can't get the water, we. We can't get any of the services that we need, so, so having said that, I'm just kind of stuck with this thing. You know, it's, it's gonna be glorified hunting land is what it's gonna be.
Rocco, you should send that, Rocco, you should have said all that and a justification for.
Well, no, I can, but I, you know, I don't.
Rocco, we're at the eleventh hour here, so, you know, you're, you're, you're throwing stuff at us, and we certainly understand what you're saying, but. You, uh, to, to have to sit here and, you know, take all this in at this point in the discussion, it's, uh, it's making it tough on us. Uh, and we, but we, we hear what you're saying, uh, that's part of my consideration, uh, as. So why I'm leaning the way I'm leaning, I guess. We provide advisory report, if we say we don't recommend it being changed, the town board has the old say, right?
Right.
They, they can take our report and say, well, I don't agree, uh, Rocco has a good argument, uh, it'll never be developed as, uh, industrial. Um, let's, you know, one in the hands and two in the bush, um, so let's go ahead with what we have, um.
Does the advisory report have to? Be positive or negative, can it? Is historically, have you, have you asked for more, that the town board asked for more information? That's what I'm wondering.
Well, we could say that, uh. You don't have enough justification to, uh, to render a report.
I mean, I agree with your positives and your negatives, the board, the town board should see that as well. You know, this is what we see, is that the planning board has placed some positives, negatives, maybe.
That we, uh, we don't provide, well, our advisory board is an analysis.
Right, right, right.
Declaration, we're just saying, these are what, and I agree with your positives and negatives, unless the town board. Ask for more from Rocco or. This stuff, you don't wanna see it set up, if, if we're encouraging development, and that land is sitting there. I'll let the town board say, okay. This is what we need, or we agree, and we'll go ahead and make a decision.
All you're doing is kicking the can down the road, you're not making a decision, you know, I mean, I, I just assume you make a decision one way or another, and if you. If you deny it, I'll take it up with the town board.
We, we don't have the power of denial or approval, we just provide a recommendation to the town board, it's all, only the town board's decision, Rocco.
Okay.
We're just trying to give them, uh, our thoughts as a, as a plant, planning people, or bubble this thing, uh, month in and month out.
What do you do? Give them a letter saying what each one of you are, are thinking, or what do you, what do you do?
No, it would be a consensus of the planning board as to how we feel about your application. And it'd be up to them to review that, uh, I don't, did it go to the county planning board for their review for the rezoning or not? Anybody else who might have input back to the town board?
The town board can send it out to the.
I'm just so confused by the fact that you spent, as a town, we spent all this money. To develop this residential layout, and back inside the uptown story, there's new numbers. Of layouts that are similar to what I did, that's where I got them from, so, yeah.
Uh, Rocco, just trying to make sure that all that money we spent is applied i- in the, in the proper manner on this particular property.
Am I, am I, I'm just doing what they said to do.
And, and because it's M U O, there's no guarantees with an M U O. It's an overlay, it's, you, it, you know, whether you bought it because it had the M U O or. For whatever reason, there's no guarantees that the M U O would ever be applied to the property.
Then, then what was the point of the study and what's the point of, what's the point of making an M U O?
Well, it's, an M U O is basically a rezoning.
Rezoning, it, it's, it's kind of like incentive zoning in a sense, yeah, in other words, you, you bring to us what you have in mind for the property and. And if it, if, if it meets, uh, with what the town's looking for in terms of the value of that site, yeah, we'll let you go ahead with it, if it doesn't.
I think that's the key, I, I think the, the goal.
I think that's the key, I, I think the, the goal was to provide the flexibility to get some creative ideas before you provide more uses. And not necessarily guarantee that, that whatever project comes in is a, is a guarantee.
The underlying zone is.
I'm not talking specifically Rock, I'm just saying.
Yep. Well, in this case. The applicant has stated that he feels that. He developed this residential property, it's not gonna be a, you know, a commercial property, it's not gonna be. Residential is what he'd like to see applied there and. We have to consider it, you made an application, we'll consider it. And we'll make a recommendation of the, the town board, but it's up ultimately to the town board, Rocco, to say.
Listen, listen, you don't have to explain it to me, I do understand it from day one.
Well, I think we're sort of zeroing in, maybe we just give them our thoughts, I, I.
I'm just, I'm just frustrated because. Because from a land use, this, this block that we're in. Mo- most of it's already residential up on the northern end, so to mix industrial with all that residential, that's not a good move. Um. And it's all under M U O, so. Um. That, that's, you know, whatever, I, I've, I've said enough already.
Yeah, I think we should, too, just. Um, how do you want, how do you want the board?
So do we wanna kind of? Send those, those pros and cons and, um, you know, expand upon. Um, maybe the, the parcel, the parcel component of it that, that we've been talking about, cause I don't know if that's. Really documented anywhere. In, um, in like other plans or letters or, you know, whatever, where. The.
Town board, the analysis you did.
Um, I was gonna suggest some of that as well.
Sure, I think they're looking for input from staff.
Yes.
Must. Mark, any concerns you have, uh, if we're, if we're giving them sort of a. Synopsis of our discussion, uh, or we could take it from John's minutes and we could put something together. Uh, you know, I could, I could try formulate something. Send it, uh, out to the board. For their blessing. Yeah, but they won't run until the twenty-first, right?
Right, but all of the peripheral materials are due tomorrow because Friday is a holiday. Technically, things come in on Monday, it's not the end of the world. So, I mean, I have a placeholder in there and the agenda already waiting for something. Um, I can send my comments. And, um, I can talk to Jean about schooling off if you all want the weekend to. Craft something, if you want me to craft something and then.
To, to the weekend, I. I could, I could probably. And then stick everything. Anybody sends me in, is that allowed?
Yes, I'm sure.
Just don't respond.
Do not respond to anyone.
And then individually they can send.
Well, they send it to you and you send.
I would send it to Sean.
Yeah, send it to me, I will get it to you.
Yep.
And, uh, to compile.
So the pros and cons that Chuck read earlier.
Is there anything additional that you think the town board should see to help with the decision that is missing, that could be one. Way to provide a recommendation, right, we think this information should be provided. Not trained to.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that those are options.
I certainly wanna get Mark's concerns in this, uh, so either. Mark, we can take it off the minutes or we can, if you wanna send something separately to Sean that.
I'm fine with taking it off the minutes and I can do both, I mean, the, you know, clearly states in the code that we're supposed to submit an advisory. Or it doesn't require a decision. You concerned with the comprehensive plan? Uh, we're looking at doing a rezoning, so my concerns with that are. That if we're going to do a rezoning, there should be a purpose for the rezoning that comes to the benefit of the town. Right, that's my understanding of the intent to rezone. We know that residential, single-family residential place is a. Burden on the fiscal responsibility of the town, uh, and it doesn't meet the five objectives that we continue to state that we're going to. Protect from a planning board perspective, so, and that's. So that's a temporal scenario, that, that's, that's what we're expected to do today.
Okay. So one, one issue in the town of Candare right now is, there's three building lots available. And there's a lot of land in the town of Candare where that can't be developed because there's no sewer available. And county sewer won't put sewer out there, so. If you're looking for, you know, for, for uses for this land. This land is good for residential, the utilities are available, they're stuff, they're, they're, they're. They're, they're proper for, for residential, not industrial. And we don't have any land for sale, I mean, there's builders in town that wanna build, they can't find a lot, they're, they're gone. Fox Ridge is gone, all Morel's is gone, Morel's building a new subdivision, but they're duplexes, so. So, so for new home buyers, there's, there's, there's no choices right now, so. This would open that up a little bit, um, and I would think that would be a concern of the town, that, that there are building lots available for prospective buyers.
Rocco, I say one more time, everything you're saying should have been in your application justification for the rezon.
Well, I, I think, I think it was, I mean, I, I think that.
I see a letter about October twenty-sixth that is about three quarters of the page. Uh, and that's what you said your intent was, that was your application, so.
So, 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 so we can't, can we, can we put this off another two weeks so that I can, no, I mean, come on.
It's not up to me, uh, we have, we, we have an obligation to respond to the town board. And we're trying to formulate that response, that's our obligation.
We haven't met sixty days yet, have we?
Sixty days is.
In order to, yes, so, we're working backwards, sixty days will be. We need to get to the twenty-first of November's agenda for the town board, so a decision has, an advisory report of some sort has to be. At least decided upon now by the planning board.
So, I don't understand what's. What's the difference if I put it in the letter or I say it to you like I just did, I don't understand that.
You're absolutely welcome to go to the town board meeting.
Well, I certainly will.
Or submit additional written. Justification of reasoning for your request. That'll be after the fact, after we submit our. Advisory report.
But Rocco, that might be, told me to speak for you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this, that might be beneficial for him to still. Him being pursuing this would be to put something in writing back to the town board, if you felt like that would be helpful. And, and no, obviously doesn't weigh any part of this planning board because. But it might be beneficial for Rocco to do that, but the town board's.
And mentioning that you've tried to sell the property as industrial for whatever, twenty years.
Whatever the reasons were that Rocco was saying, I think documenting your Rocco, I think is the key. Putting it in paper so that it gets referenced by people, this date presented by this person at this point in time says this information. And we agreed to it, I think goes a long way, so if I was you, I, I, I think I would submit that information to the town board for their approval.
Land, just so I understand process to a certain extent, if this is converted to an M U O. Then, then it would have to return for subdivision?
So, yeah, I think if we're only talking about his first two phases. Then that's the only thing that we would see as a subdivision.
Right.
But for you, all the rest of the vacant land, not to be disturbed, not to be touched, remain as is for. Next year, two years, two hundred years. So I know it's, I, I can understand Rocco's approach with not wanting to develop the whole thing now. And not put all the money, the cost of going to doing that design work and engineering work. It is a struggle from, I think, the planning per side because we have to look at the whole picture, we try not to segment secret in environmental. Processes, we have the size, water, sewer, and roadways to make sure that it can accommodate future buildup. And that's a fine line that we'll be monitoring through this if this does come back to us and try to figure that out.
Rocco, you had a positive advisory report from the planning board back in two thousand twenty. And nothing happened. I mean, I guess.
It, it wasn't my choice, I just. I, I. I, I put it in front of you guys. And then it just kinda died.
Uh, we, we submitted a report and then went to town board and.
It never, no, you pulled it off the agenda.
Okay, you're right, you're right, I did, yeah. So, so you gave me a positive, you gave me a positive report then and you won't now, I don't understand, what, what's, what's wrong with that picture?
Chance you take, chance you take, new board.
Or different.
New days, new documents, now we have a foreign base code, we have an uptown study, anyway, uh. Give me your, uh, thoughts. Or give Sean a, she'll send one to me, I'll put it together, I'll send it out to the board. And we'll come up with it, alright?
Alright, I'll see you guys.
Alright, thanks, Rocco.
Hi, Rocco.
Okay. In this pile. Alright, we got two other, uh, requests from the, uh, town board for, uh, our, uh. Our referrals, our, our thoughts. Uh, one being the, let's take the incentive zoning. And, Sean, that's what tells us, I mean, it's essentially adding more district.
So essentially the change in incentive zoning, which we do allow in certain districts. Would be the change, proposed changes to allow it in all districts, zoning districts of the town. Obviously, and I'm just a, uh, education on incentive zoning, it is. A perk for a developer, but it's also beneficial to the town and that we are looking for something specific. And we dictate what that will be from the developer, whether it's, you know, money for a new park or, I mean, there's a, like, there is.
It has to be a community, typically where it is a community benefit.
Yes, it, it, maybe it's a new fire station, maybe it's a new. Sidewalks, sidewalks, trails, paved trails, complete streets, white cars. Right, right, so we, we as a town dictate. What we would like and that the developer gets.
So previously it was restricted to just one couple. Four districts and now we're going up to. Six, eight.
Is there any real reason, I mean, other than trying to provide it more opportunity? Was there anything else that was driving the need to expand this out further? Residences, if we can even talk about it, I don't know.
Right.
Why?
Yes.
Okay, uh, does the board concur that this is a, for the town and recommend it?
Could I add recommendations?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Could I, um, give you my handwritten? Recommendation?
I'll take that.
And just for, just to say out loud, it's for the affordable, affordable housing pieces of it, it's. So I wavered on. I did some Googling. I was like, do I just add two sentences or do I say, hey, let's do like a whole section on affordable housing, but it just said, alright, let's go. Lowball here, two sentences, easy grabs, um. Uh, in the first page, I. Uh, in the section authority, the authority may be used by the town guard, town board to assist in implementing the following planning objectives. I added to provide, and however you want to word it, affordable housing development options would not, that would not otherwise be. Possible or feasible, something of that nature, I give you free range on updating. Yes, absolutely. And then. In the second page, under F, community benefits, so like, what's in it for us? I add housing for persons of lower moderate income, no, affordable housing, quote unquote, as an unmet need. Those are my two recommendations to start inserting. The affordable housing pieces of all of it in, um. On the last page, I just pointed a quick little framework if you wanna do it its own section, but. Let's just start here and then go. And if it's rejected, if these are rejected, then I'll just put the whole section, but I'll send you. Um, and free range, however you would like to modify the text there, but if you can understand my intent.
This is the board.
You, uh, would understand that. And it's, okay, I agree.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that attention, I certainly feel like should be. Anything else you wanna add to? And you're right, at some point, I think we need a tutorial on it, since, and I think we talked about that at some point. Maybe if we ever get a meeting where we. Cause it's been rarely used and, but it's hanging out there and now we got a lot of more districts.
Every day.
Yeah, we have quite a bit.
Affordable housing as part of it.
Sorry. That's got mixed residential, it's single-family tunnels, apartments, and then the front corners are commercial.
Oh, right, right.
Residential, everything not built, commercial.
Yeah.
What is Farmington getting generally?
As part of that, so there was intersection improvements made to that, which. You have to weigh whether or not that's a community benefit or a development benefit, but there was lighting and lighting in the streets. There were sidewalk improvements made, the oven trail runs behind this development, so there were several connections improvements made there. Um, there is a future road, you know, Farmington has adopted, they call it M T O D maps. Which is a major thoroughfare over the district, there are parallel roads to offset traffic on three thirty-two. So they have all these predetermined locations where connections to three thirty-two would run, the parallel roads would go. So as part of this development, a major town roadway would be part of the development criteria. Setting from county one forty-one down to a future light beyond the limits of their property. So they, they made improvements to accommodate that future buildup. Um, there is some parkland, oh, I should have said it, open space land and trail improvements on the site. Um, and then there was some off-site sanitary sewer improvements made, again, arguments they made as to whether or not that was. Done purposely for their development or was there other future benefits out of that? At the time, there needed to be upgrades, this helped that.
And it can be more than just one thing.
Yeah, so a lot of times the way it gets presented is, an applicant would submit a request to the town, the town then would say, okay, what are you? And as part of that request, it's, this is what we could do otherwise. This is what we wanna do, and to offset those improvements, we're doing the following things. Um, cause a lot of times it's clustering, right, to get more density, therefore creating. Possibly more open space areas or other improvements that can be made. So they create a list, there's usually a cost to show this is the value that many of the that we're giving to town. And therefore that offsets some of the development, you know, this is our game, this is your game, they're kinda running the same. That usually then goes through the town board and gets referred back up to all the other boards, um, for recommendation. A lot of times it comes back to staff behind the scenes, as we work with highway superintendent, the sewer departments, the county would probably have to weigh in because. This is a community benefit, so there might be other areas where improvements can be made that offset some of that. Some have been made in the form of, hey, we need money to help with the study for the sewer project that we're doing right now. That we're still in the process of working through, then there would be a donation.
Guessing, candidate with that, uh, the Wigan property.
Villas was the last one that I learned.
It was a part of it, yeah, it was one of those things, yeah, the trail down to.
I think, I think there was like a million dollar improvements made or many of these provided or some of the negative.
Okay, so, um. We're comfortable with sending a recommendation, uh. See amendment with the edit condition. Or comments from, uh, okay, old favor. I don't think we got a motion, I'll make a motion.
You got it.
Okay, all there. The other referral has to do with, uh, seen Fuchsia. That's just an oversight in the original draft to. To make sure that, uh, if the property, underlying property was. Make sure that, uh, if the property, underlying property was, uh, greater than, uh. One acre that, uh, that's lot size applying, not. So I, I think, uh, I'll make a motion. Let me endorse that. I'll second it. On favor?
I.
Okay. Nothing else happening. The Z B A or training, uh, can we confirm and put on record that everybody is?
I am not. I still have an hour and a half. I will.
You too.
So you knew everything with my office manager and the move.
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
My, my brother fell asleep last week and my mother found her elbow.
Oh, my gosh.
So she went to rehab. He died the day she came home, so. But, but things are, it was a blessing, but, um, so mine, mine will be done. Probably by the end of November. If not, there's that Saturday in December, the first Saturday.
Four hours.
Right, so and I will, I might gain some action.
Or just.
I, I know.
Online.
Yes, no, I know, it's, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear about.
Yeah, it's been crazy, but I, it's in the top of, top of my day.
So you've had an hour and a half and more of training, beating a son, right? Seen a good son. Alrighty, uh. Next two weeks, we have a couple of applications. I'm not gonna throw them now. We have. We roll over, uh, Shepherd and Burke. And along with everything else that's listed. P R C next Monday, we roll up some more, should we? So, uh, yeah, the twenty-second, then we have the one meeting in December.
Oh, wow.
And that's our first year anniversary.
John's position has been advertised, if you know anyone.
If you know anyone, please, John's and the Z B A's.
Well, we just don't, we just don't let John, all right.
Can't, can't leave whatsoever.
I did ask him that. He said he might be able to zoom in for us.
Where are you going?
Living life.
He's just tired of us.
We don't have to be here.
All right, okay, uh, anything else for the board?
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight twelve.
All fair? Thanks, guys.